All set? Uh, welcome to the Tingsborough Planning Board Agenda for August 1st, 2024. We'll start with introductions.
I'm Pamela Berman.
Good evening, Jeremy Baldwin.
Kimberly O'Brien.
Steve O'Neil.
Dave Robson.
Jazz Doughty.
David Nader with TEC.
Okay, anybody speaking tonight? If you can come up to the mics, um, when it's your turn and just say your name and your address for the, uh, audience. Okay, up first, 1:30, Middlesex Road, MAP 21, parcel 19, Michael Ferris, applicant for a special permit under section 2.11.30, combined business dwelling in section 3.10.41. General standards for parking, including area design and location of the Tingsborough Planning Board zoning bylaws, as well as any other permit relief as may be required under the Tingsborough zoning bylaws for the redevelopment of an existing shopping slash office building by converting the second floor office space into seven residential apartments with associated parking and drainage improvements, continued from July 18th, 2024.
Mr. Chair, I'll be recusing myself.
Okay.
What's up, Mr. Chairman?
How you doing?
Good afternoon, everybody. Brian Dunn with MBL Land Development and Permitting, offices at 5 Bristol Drive in Southeastern Massachusetts, on behalf of the applicant, Michael Ferris. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we've gone through a few revisions and they've been reviewed, uh, by your peer review consultant, and he's here tonight to, to back up that we've addressed everything that's been asked of us, uh, in regards to the site plans, and we're looking for an approval this evening, Mr. Chairman. So we would, if you don't have any other questions about what we've shown on the plans, we'd like you to close the public hearing and issue a decision.
Okay, um, Jeremy?
Could you, um, let's see. Did you address anything? I believe we had some questions for, um, asking about the unit layouts at all, if there were some, uh, where the entrances were for the residents?
Mm-hmm.
And mechanical units and where those would be located and screening.
Okay, so if, through the chair, we provided an architectural layout, that's one of the plans. It's on, um, C-12 of the set of plans that you have. Roughly, it shows the front entrance still being used, and is it gonna be another back entrance in the building as well? So there's two means of ac- access, uh, to the second floor. And, uh, the mechanical units, uh, most of them are either on the roof or cantileaved on the back of the building right now. Mr. Ferris hasn't hired a, an architect or an MEP engineer to start to look at that. That would be part of the building permit process and the detailed plans that would be associated with the second floor, Mr. Chairman.
So all the HVAC units are gonna be removed and put somewhere?
Right now, we do not know, uh, where they would be, uh, removed or where they would be placed because that design has not started.
Jeremy?
That's my questions for now.
I guess I'm just wondering why there's a phase to the building of the parking lot?
Through the chair, there's not a phase to the building. There's a phasing diagram on construction in regards to, uh, how the contractor will start to build the site in phases. That was a request of this board, uh, at one of the last meetings. So we provided that phasing plan to show, uh, how sections of the parking lot and the drainage would be installed at, at different times.
But both will be complete before you get your certificate of occupancies?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
We can't get a CO, through the chair, we can't get a CO unless we provide all our parking spaces and, uh, all the utilities to the building.
And can you remind me again why you need the waiver for the one tree for every eight parking spaces?
Uh, because there was very, very limited area on the site. As you know, most of the site is already paved. We did increase the landscaping area, uh, we, we added two islands in, through the chair, uh, two islands in the, the main front area of the building, and we also added landscaping area to the back of the building to help protect, uh, the, the doorways and the building from the vehicles who'd be driving around the back of the building. So we did the best we could in regards to increasing the landscaping plan, uh, landscaping area, but not being able to provide that type of, uh, tree for every eight spaces. So we do have a landscaping plan, it's on C-10, if you could turn to that. So there are, there are trees in those islands in the, in the front of the building. There's trees and bushes, uh, to the left, uh, south side of the building, and then there's also some other bushes being planted on the, the side of the restaurant where the dumpster pad is, and some bushes up front as well. So, and the other areas that we're showing in green is a restoration seed mix, uh, that will end up growing in there nice and green, uh, over the years, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead.
Come back again.
Um, I've been asking about the parking since we started to review this project, and I don't see any changes here at all. I'm disappointed that, um, C-4, where you talk about the parking table, has not been updated to, um, reflect the existing conditions that you hope to have.
I'm, I'm confused by your question.
Okay, so you've got eight, eight businesses downstairs, right?
I'm sorry?
You have eight businesses downstairs?
Yes.
You have one business upstairs?
Correct.
That's nine businesses. You're indicating eight businesses in the parking table.
Okay, so we're, we're missing a couple of spaces for the upstairs, uh, office area.
So you're missing three there. You talked to the Board of Health, the, uh, Mavs Kitchen, which you wanted, you just used three for, actually has 12 seats there, so therefore you're gonna need another parking space for there. And I'm a little concerned about the fact that you want to use, uh, just three parking spaces for those businesses?
Okay.
Hang on, you done, Jazz?
So, right now, it looks like you've got six businesses that are operating downstairs at the moment. You've got the Health and Wells and Spa, they have two employees. The day that I was there, there were three people there. The Tex Mex Mart had one employee, which was fine. Then you've got Nail Places and what I would call beauty salons, and may, that may not be the technical term today, but, um, I went into the barber shop, they had four barbers working, they had four clients, and they had one waiting. That's nine spots. Bliss Color, every one of these places that, there's a beauty shop, there's multiple chairs for multiple beauticians, hair dryers. I don't think you can use the one space, uh, the three spaces per establishment, you don't have the parking there, you don't have the parking now, and I'm not gonna approve this to be that way. You need to have the one space for 200 square feet, which means I think you need 53 spaces to do that. You don't have the parking to, to, to pull this off, I'm afraid.
Okay, through the chair, Mr. Chairman, so the zoning regulations and your, your consultant is here to, to discuss this as well. So it's not based on the seats or the number of people who are working in those establishments, it's based on square foot area. So saying that we don't have 12 parking spaces for the restaurant that has 12 seats does not go along with what's spelled out in the zoning. So we, we might be, you know, if we have, uh, an office upstairs and we don't, we can't use it as an office, we show that we have ample spaces for all of the uses that are associated with this building and the restaurant right now.
Mr. Chair, through you. So our zoning bylaw reads one space for 200 square feet of gross leasable area, and you're not providing that. You've got 10,000, 500 square feet, that equates to 52 and a half parking spaces, round up to 53, 'cause anytime you're over a number, you have to round up. So that, plus the restaurant, which is 50 spaces, that's, you need 100 and, 103 spaces. You don't have it.
I, I just, Mr. Chairman, I disagree with this calculation.
Okay, you can, but that's what the book says, so it's...
But that's what, that's what we did. We did retail and office space, one space for 200 square feet of office, or a minimum of three per establishment, or.
Right.
Or a minimum.
Or a minimum.
How many square feet is it?
Of each rea- of each retail space?
That's what he's saying, it's a 10,000 square foot building roughly, and, um, which would equate to 53 parking spots if you do it according to the, uh, square footage.
Right, but it's, it's not and/or, it's or. So it's not, it's not both.
We're not asking for both.
Right, but it's, but the regulations say or, so when you do or, that means you...
And, uh, and you're looking for a special permit for this, correct?
Yes, sir.
And it should be brought up to code, which, you know, drainage and all that is what...
Oh, we, no, we, excuse me, we did that. In fact, we did more than we were supposed to do in regards to the drainage, Mr. Chairman.
Listen, we, I was just going over, we were talking about the drainage and the parking and all of that. So you're saying one thing, the book is saying another, I said you're bringing this up, correct? 'Cause you're increasing units here? So the board is looking at it as a whole, and the parking, you can say it says and/or, but it's and/or, and I kind of agree with Jazz about the parking there and the 52 spots. You're at 103 now and you have 88, and you wanna add more. But, you know, we're, that's, you know, we'll go back to this, I guess, I understand what you're saying, unless you have something to add other than that?
Can I speak?
Yes, no?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I agree with the and, with the or, by the, I'll start with that, but, you know, the plaza's been in existence for a long time.
Absolutely.
Office space is upstairs, there's seven, there's eight units right now. If I take seven of those units and turn them into residential, instead of office space, there will be less parking being used for sure, okay? 'Cause a residence isn't gonna require, you know, probably more than two cars on average. An office space, which like, as you know, 'cause you went and visited, you see more employees and then you see customers, you see traffic like that, as you saw when you went, is gonna require more parking. This plaza's been in existence, well, I don't even know how long, 30 years, 25 years at this point, with this parking and with office space upstairs, which requires more, it, it 's more impact on the parking than residential.
I hear, I...
So a change of use would, would without a doubt reduce the amount of parking spots that are necessary.
And, and I hear what you're saying, I really do, and I understand that, but you're an existing preconditioned unit. You probably could, and I don't know, but you probably couldn't build that same building today with all them offices there on that plot. So I get it, it's been there for a long time, and I understand what you're saying with the offices, and it might be less, but, you know...
But the board has discretion, since we're asking for a special permit.
They do, they do have discretion.
Right.
And I'm just trying to tell you that, that the rules today aren't the same rules as back then.
I agree.
So, that's all, that's all, just, he thinks it's tight parking from this, I think it's tight parking, but...
It'll be tighter if it stays office space and I, and I actually fill the top, which I haven't done, I've waited because I expected to, to go forward with this project.
I get it, I get it.
So logic would dictate, you know, yes, I agree, you know, maybe it is too tight, but it will be less tight with residential.
And I get what you're saying, but it's a precondition, right? There's a lot of buildings today that were built like your building way back when, that, you know, sidelines, dimensions have changed, all that, but, you know, that's neither here nor there, I guess, um, I understand what you're saying, you know, it may be more, but...
Yeah, if you apply logic to it, if the building can function with office space, seven office spaces that may require 30 or 40 parking spots, and you break it down to seven, you know, residential units that were likely you need two weeks, that's 14, that's half. I mean, now listen, I understand that there's regulations, and I understand there's prior existing conditions, and I understand it may be different now, but if the actual concern is the number of parking spots and whether the building and the, can handle it, I'm sorry, but logic dictates that it would make more sense for those to be u- used as residential units.
All right.
With, with all due respect.
That, that's fine. Anybody in the, uh, audience wanna speak on this? It's a public hearing.
I guess my question.
You can step up to the mic, please.
My question, I know as far as a lot of people are working remotely from home...
Can you say your name and your address?
Uh, my name is Mary Ellen Sorenson, and I'm not from Tingsborough, but my concern is as far as...
Can you just give your address for the...
37 Glen Ave, Chumsford. I guess my question is, because I frequent that area a lot, and I want, my concern is that if you're saying that's gonna be parking spaces, whether it's residential or commercial, what's the difference whether somebody works from home these days? So who's to say they're gonna not be there for those spaces to be used or occupied? Whether it's residential or commercial, that's my concern, and I've been in there. I've visited Casadores, I've visited there, I grew up, I went to Notre Dame, and I know the area, it's always very tight, whether nowadays, people drive bigger vehicles, you're not driving a Prius. So again, the spaces being in there are tight, and that's my concern, whether it's a fire or a hazard, being residential or commercial.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else? Anybody at all? I will go around again, Jeremy, you wanna...
Yeah, I mean, the big concerns I have is just the tight site. Uh, you know, one of the things is, you're proposing, uh, well, when you're rounding the building, uh, over on the, I'll call it the north side, you know, the, the bollards over there are already banged up because it is tight to get around those corners, it looks like, um, you know, the backside of the building is kind of a mess, and I'm concerned that that's just not gonna be a welcoming site for the residents because I don't see any plantings or anything being proposed out there in the backside of the building. I see that you have the ladder truck for the fire department that can make the round, if you come off of Old Ting out towards Middlesex or vice versa, but it's tight, I mean, you're, you're pressing it, in my opinion, um, and I'm just curious if, if that is the, is that the largest truck that we have currently in Tingsborough, if you could address that part?
Okay, so, through the chair, so what we do, what we do in our office, we contact the fire department, we get the dimensions of the fire truck. We have software, uh, through AutoCAD, which is AutoTurn, you put the, the detailed information of the fire truck, and it, uh, puts the path, uh, on, on the drawing for us. So it shows us where the fire truck can go and where we need to make changes to the widths of things and so on and so forth. It also shows us the swing path, um, the overhangs and the tail end of the vehicle, as well as the, um, the tire path. So we've done that, we've proposed, uh, that, that access, and, and as, to my understanding, we don't have any comments from the fire department that says it's, that they're not okay with that.
All right.
Um, in the back, in regards to the back of the building, we were asked, uh, at one of the other meetings to add some protection of the building, we did that, I think we could, if you wanted to, we could add some bushes in the back of the building to green it up a little bit better, but I think with all of this, uh, that Mr. Ferris is going to be cleaning up the site, cleaning up the building, making it look a lot better, um, investing a lot of money into the site design and the drainage, as well as the landscaping and, um, the, the upgrade to the utilities and the, the building itself. So I think there's a lot of positive things here, um, and I, in regards to the bollards that are bent, yes, they, they have been bent before, that we do, are proposing new bollards to go at the four corners of the building, however, we're opening up the access aisles to be a lot bigger than they are right now.
Okay, and just a last, a couple of questions, um, is there any, uh, fencing that is proposed around the dumpsters?
Yes, those are all enclosed.
Completely enclosed, even in the front?
Yes. If you look at the, our details, it has a front enclosure.
All right, I was looking at the plans and I didn't see it. And any bike storage on site?
We have not proposed any bike storage.
And, um, re- the resident parking only, I see that you have three EV chargers, but it looks like those are just dedicated in the back for the commercial zone. Any of the residence spaces that would be dedicated for any, uh, EV charging stations?
Um, we didn't propose any specific residential, uh, use of the EV, uh, charging stations, so they could be used by residents or people who are coming to the building.
And I'm sorry, could it...
So there's nothing dedicated to a resident for an EV charging station space, so anyone can use it.
Gotcha, so any, uh, if that's, that being said, is there, um, any restriction? So there's no restriction for the residents, um, to be able to park, they can park anywhere they want, but there's n- I see you have resident only, I'm, I'm assuming that those will be labeled resident only, so...
Yes. So we have eight spa- eight spots on one side for residents only and six on the other side. So on the right side of the building, eight and six on the left side.
Could you, could you point me towards the, the dumpster enclosure that shows the ga- that there is a gate on there on the front? Oh, wait, okay, no, I can see it, I'm sorry.
There you go, it's a vinyl dumpster enclosure on C-7.3, and you can clearly see, um, it has a swinging cedar gate.
It's all, Mr. Chair, thank you.
I think that's the first time I can say, Mr. Chairman, that I've ever been asked about a detail on a plan, but, very good. In 35 years, I've never been asked about a detail.
Are you planning to limit the parking for residential to two cars per unit, or are you gonna allow that for as many cars as they might have? 'Cause you've got three-bedroom apartments, and I know in my house, when the kids were teenagers, there were four cars.
So I don't think that we're restrict, there's nothing that I'm aware of that we're gonna restrict the residents to only have two parking spaces. So what we do is we try to show on our zoning and parking table how we conform to the zoning regulations of what's required. If someone has a three-bedroom house and there's three cars, then yes, they're gonna have to find another spot for that third car.
What's up, and I'm...
Yeah.
I mean, I go back, you know, you're saying there's gonna be a lot of improvements, and I get that, not that it couldn't be improved now while the people are here, I know this place is always busy, I just don't, I don't see the parking, and I hear what you're saying, if it's a residence, it's still not enough parking for what you would need today. And for us not to, you know, correct it, because you have a lot more people in the businesses today, I'm sure, than you did, you know, when you built it, so...
The parking ebbs and flows in this, you know, the Casadores is a nighttime, you know, most of the bar- barber is, uh, during the day, Mexican store closes during the day, Mavs is 90-something, I think he told me 97% takeout, does that sound about right? I think lunchtime, he gets some people sitting there, his intention is to get rid of the tables, um, there's just so little impact on, from anything other than Casadores, it's, it's, it's inconsequential in that park as well. It's Casadores, and it's a Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, you know, parking issue, and that's it. I know for a fact, I, I, I mean, I know Victor, I left there, there's only eight seats there, he used to have 12, he took one table out, he's taking the rest out, he wants to do takeout only, and that's all people do, is takeout. In fact, we're talking about designating a spot just for a takeout, you know, so people can go in and out.
I don't know how you designate one when you seem like you're shot, just...
No, I'm saying like, so people can go in and out, taking out his food, and, yeah, I'm just saying that's how...
But that's what we're saying, it's crowded, but...
Well, what I'm saying is, this is how limited, limited his customers use their parking spaces, that he doesn't even, you know, have tables in there.
But you know what, he's there, and we gotta count for the parking spaces, for when the barber shop has four seats full, or the nail salon or whatever, so...
Which is in the middle of the day when Casadores is not full.
All right, um, Jess, anything else?
I've, I've said my piece, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, um, anybody from the audience? Anybody at all?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a...
Second.
Second, uh, hang on, you two, all set, Jeremy, 'cause, okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Looking for a motion? Um, let's see, I have it here.
Well, if I could, Mr. Chair, um, if we could have a, somewhat of a discussion on this, um...
Will we just close, yeah, we can have a discussion.
Well, discussion between us, right?
Boy, can the Republican...
Yep.
I'm just curious if we would propose any conditions on any, uh, any of this, if there, because we did have brought up a couple of things, uh, during this meeting, whether it's the plantings in the back and the buffering.
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, we can either make a motion with conditions, see if it passes, if it does, then there's conditions, and if it doesn't pass, no conditions. So, uh, we're talking, all the utilities have to be off the ba- off, off the ground and connected to the building, AC units, gas units, all of them? You're looking for somebody to move them anyways, so...
There's none on the ground now.
Nothing?
No.
ACs?
Nope.
Yeah, they can't leave off the building.
It's just where's I, I expect them to stay.
Okay. And do we, uh, can't go there, but for the signage, uh, Jeremy, I believe, you were saying, also?
I can't recall, oh, uh, that was for the resident only, uh...
Yeah.
And the... Yeah, I think that was, okay, I'm just noting them down. So if I could just review the, a couple of those conditions with the board, um, we, we discussed, uh, receiving a, a planting plan... We, we discussed, uh, receiving a, a planting plan for the, I'll call it the west side of the building. Backside of the building, along with, uh, mechanical and utility units for the residents to be screened and attached to the building, or how were you wording that?
Yeah, I, um, I think maybe, um, Pam, if we give you the changes, we can have them.
So, Mr. Chair, if I might, we have a proposed motion here that we could just add those.
Right, we can just add the conditions to them.
Yeah.
That's what it says.
And that's, I was just trying to confirm the condition that we were trying to word, how we were wording it for those mechanical units. If it was, are we trying to say that it's, um, they're attached to the building or screened, or how, how are we?
I, yes, like they're attached and screened.
And then the last one was the, uh, signage for the resident only parking spaces.
And there was the condition, the upstairs was gonna be, remain, uh, the office space not used, correct? Or you're gonna keep that business, all nine of them?
Uh, yeah, I would expect to keep it, yeah.
Okay, so, all right, um.
Condition that they update the parking tables.
Oh, and they have. So we got one.
To show that there are nine businesses?
What sheet was that on?
Cedar.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, uh, just as a note, uh, just a point of, uh, order, there is on the plans residential signs and bollards. Those are also on C four.
Good, all right, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion.
Uh, sure.
To approve, uh, oh, sorry. One thirty Middlesex Road, uh, motion to grant the following waivers for Tinsborough zoning bylaws. Section seven point one point H point one A, parking and loading area design and location. Waive this section to allow parking within fifteen feet of a right-of-way. Section seven point one point H point two, parking dimensions. Waive the town standard parking dimensions for handicap parking spaces and use the size requirement set the state of Massachusetts in five twenty-one CMR twenty-three. Section seven point one point H point nine A landscaping. Waive the requirement to have one tree for every eight parking spaces around the perimeter. And the motion to approve this special permit for combined business dwelling for the conversion of the second floor office spaces to seven residential apartments and the redevelopment of the parking lot at one thirty Middlesex Road per plans revised through July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, with the, with the following conditions. Uh, one, planting plan to be submitted for the west side, backside of the site, abutting the building. Two, that the mechanical units be attached to the building and screened. Uh, and three, update Plan C four point O to show nine businesses. The proposed use is in harmony with the propos- purpose and intent of this bylaw. Will not be detrimental or harmful to the ne- to the neighborhood in which it is to take place. Will not be detriment, oh, sorry, is appropriate for the site in question and complies with all applicable requirements of this bylaw.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those, uh, we'll take a.
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Jeremy Baldwin?
In favor.
Kimberly O'Brien?
In favor.
Steve O'Neil?
Not in favor.
Chaz Doughty?
Not in favor.
Does not pass.
Understood. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks. Okay, next up is five hundred Potash Hill Road doing business as Mass Crane MAP twenty-one, PSL twenty-three, one B one. Crane Realty Trust applicant for a modification to an existing special permit for the construction of a eleven thousand five hundred square, square foot addition to an existing forty thousand two hundred fifty square foot building in an I one district. Advertised in Low Son, July third, eleventh, twenty twenty-four. How you doing?
Hello, um, so good evening, Casey Ferrer with Howardson Hudson. I have here John Karp, who is the GC, the overseeing manager of the project. And I also have Mr. George Frost, the owner of the, the business, uh, sitting in the audience tonight. Um, the last time we were here, I believe it was July eighteenth. Um, we left with a couple marching orders, which was, um, let's work with the peer reviewers and make sure we get a clean peer review letter. Uh, and then also, let's see what we can do about the lighting on the building, the current lighting, uh, as well as how we're proposing to move forward with the lighting. Um, I did, actually, I, I will mention, we had a pretty good discussion with the abutters as we left that night. Um, and, and a lot of what we told them was revolved around, uh, now that we know that you guys have a problem or you guys, um, see an issue here, then we're gonna work to fix it. Mr. Frost was very amenable to, to trying to find a solution to help them out. And, you know, we, I know we left that meeting saying, you know, we're ready to submit. But we spent the next week or so, uh, working with our lighting consultant to try and really nail down something that can work and something that can help them. Um, and, and really what we, what we got to was, the first step we're gonna take is we're gonna reduce the, the output of the lights that we're proposing. Um, the existing lights that are remaining along the building will remain as they exist, but the ones that are moving closer to those abutters, uh, we're gonna use a reduced output, and that was shown in the revised lighting plan. And what that does is it keeps the illumination, uh, not just within our property, but really within the area we wanna secure, which is that, that turnaround. Um, you know, in and around and adjacent to that building, if that's what we wanna illuminate, we don't wanna illuminate Potash, we don't wanna illuminate the woods across. Um, we're concerned about the, the turnaround and right adjacent to that building. Additionally, one of the, one of the things that the lighting consultant told me was, you know, what they're seeing is really the light source. They're not seeing illumination from the lights, they're seeing the source of the light itself. Which the only real way to, to protect against that is a physical barrier, um, which those trees provided at one point. Um, unfortunately, we don't have room between us and where those abutters are to plant more trees of, of our own. Um, so one of the options we looked into was shields for those lights. Uh, we reached out to lighting manufacturer of those units, uh, they do have, um, lighting shields. They've already ordered a bunch of them. Um, and what they're gonna do is, you know, we can't promise that we'll maintain them because if they affect the output of the lights too much where the security is compromised, we don't wanna keep them on there if, if we don't feel like the building is secure. Um, but we're definitely willing to try it and see how it works out. Um, so Mr. Frost, once they receive them, they're gonna, they're gonna attach those shields on, and we're gonna see if it makes a difference and hopefully it helps. So, but again, we did reduce the output of the lights that we're proposing. We'll put the shields on those lights as well, if, if we decide that we're gonna keep them and maintain them. We'll add those and hopefully we can add that physical barrier to help those abutters out. And then the last, the, the second thing we, we set out to was to, to achieve a clean peer review letter. We just received a peer review letter, uh, yesterday afternoon, which was great, cause I know I gave you guys a short turnaround, so thank you for that. It, it was clean with the exception of, uh, three comments that just came up from the new plans, three new things. Um, and I can address those now, they're really questions more than they are concerns. Um, so if you'd like, I can go through and address those or.
Sure.
So one of the questions that they had was with our, one of the new units that we put in, so we put in a, a unit called a downstream defender. I talked about this at the last meeting, it, its real purpose is to treat stormwater, but we're using it for an invert benefit so that we can raise the pipe up instead of having to continue going lower, which would have us impacting ledge. So their question was, with the, the downstream defender raising those inverts, how does that affect the surcharging behind it? So, you know, the, the downstream defender, what it's gonna do is it's gonna bring the pipe up to, to elevation two thirty-three, um, which the top of that pipe would be two thirty-four and a half. Um, all the rims of the catch basins that go into that are up in the two thirty-six plus area, so there's plenty of room for surcharging behind it. Um, so it's just gonna surcharge up those pipes and use that to create a back pressure to push that water up and out, so we have the elevation we need. It was a second question about, uh, orientation of a manhole and how the pipes come in at an angle. Um, that's an existing manhole with existing cores that way, so we're just proposing to reuse those cores. So we're not proposing anything new, it's just an existing manhole with existing cores, uh, in those exact locations. Um, one core is gonna get larger, going closer towards, um, but they already pre-cored it. Uh, usually when they have an eighteen inch core, it's already twenty-four inches anyway. Um, so we'll add that boot in and just boot that twenty-four inch right into that same core. And the third question was whether or not the riprap apron, uh, was gonna be, uh, big enough to sustain the additional stormwater flow. Uh, there is no additional stormwater flow, everything that we're directing there already goes there now, we're just reorienting how it gets there. So that riprap apron should be, if it's, um, it's, it's gonna perform as it was proposed and approved to perform before. And that's the three.
You agree with that, or do you need time to do numbers and?
No, I, um, my mic, my mic's on.
Yep.
Um, I, I agree with the downstream defender, I'll come back to, um, the riprap. If it's, if it's been, yeah, cause they're not, um, adding any additional flow for the, for the site. Um, they're reconfiguring the, um, the flows, I guess, how, how it gets there, but I agree with that comment. The cord manhole, if they say they can do it, then, then they should be able to. Um, it was more of just a informational, like, hey, you have, you know, your angles and, um, how large your pipes are coming in here. Um, the main, uh, concern about the downstream defender wasn't so much surcharging that you would, um, have water kind of overtopping the catch basins. Is that y- you're gonna have standing water in multiple structures upstream of that. And, um, so I was looking into it, you know, the, the manufacturer recommends that the out, uh, the outlet of the up gradient, um, uh, structure is at the same height a- as the invert of, that's essentially this leaving, um, in order for it to provide the, the treatment. So I didn't know if you wanted to speak to that.
Yep, so that's, that's strictly treatment oriented, we're not using it to get any treatment out of the system. We're just using it to, to raise those invert elevations and we're comfortable with where the water will sit within those structures. Um, if we were going for the treatment, uh, that's certainly a concern, but, uh, we're not going for the treatment being used out of the structure, we're strictly using it for an invert.
Got it. Then my only remaining concern would be that, um, there will be standing water in a couple of structures, but that's, that's really it.
Okay, can we eliminate that, uh, if they do more engineering, or it's not an issue? Won't be an issue?
Um, just that there'd be standing water, yeah.
Okay, right in the, um, catch basins?
Yep.
It'll still be approximately two and a half feet from the surface of the rim, so it's still significantly down.
No, that's fine. Anything else?
I believe that takes care of what we set out to, to find in the last two weeks, and so I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Uh, Jeremy?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, just had a couple of questions about the lighting. Um, it's, so you had mentioned reducing the, uh, the output, is that on the documents anywhere about like a lumen output or where, how it would be done?
Yep, so on the lighting sheet, so we actually, um, in the last set, we gave two lighting sheets. The, the previous TEC representative that was here, I had asked for one that would include the existing light poles as well because that would be, that would add to the illumination that comes off the site. So there's two sheets, one that has the existing light poles with the security lights, and then one sheet that just has the security lights. In that sheet that has the security lights, the, uh, bottom of the, um, sheet should have a lighting schedule and that's going to dictate which lighting model and which lumen output it should be using.
My.
I believe it's on the bottom right there where it just, it says, um, the model of the units. If it does not, then it.
C eight?
Oh, C eight, I'm on C seven, sorry.
So there's a, there's the table at the bottom, and it says the different units that were used as part of this calculation. Um, all those codes are different models of the different lights that I don't know how to speak to.
Sticking with the lighting, um, I, I know it was mentioned last meeting about possibility of the security lighting being on motion sensors, has that been investigated at all?
So that was actually one of the discussions we had right outside after the meeting, and it was, um, the problem that you have with motion lighting is, anything sets it off, it just kinda ends up blinking throughout the night, and the abutters did not want that.
That's all I have, thanks.
I don't have any other questions?
I don't have any more questions.
No, I'm good too.
Anybody from the audience wishing to speak? Anyone? Okay, um, so the three things that were outstanding, you're all settled, we, you don't have to do any math on them, okay, good. Oh, looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Public hearing closed. Another motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion that five hundred Potash Hill, motion to approve the modification to the existing special permit for five hundred Potash Hill Road Mass Crane to construct an eleven hundred, five hundred, eleven thousand five hundred square foot addition to the existing building per site plan and building addition dated June fourth, twenty twenty-four and revised through July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Conditions, that this proposal is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, will not be detrimental or harmful to the neighborhood in which it will take place, is appropriate for the site in question and compli- applies with all applicable requirements of this bylaw.
Second.
Okay, wanna vote?
Roll call, Jeremy Berman? Jeremy Baldwin?
Aye.
Kimberly O'Brien?
In favor.
Steve O'Neil?
In favor.
Dave Robson?
In favor.
Chaz Doughty?
In favor.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Glad you guys talked.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Okay.
Have a great night, everybody.
You too.
Thank you.
You too.
All right, moving along, approval of minutes, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, new business, anybody have anything did not reasonably anticipate?
Kim, you wanna touch base, um, I'm sorry, Pam, you wanna touch base real quick on, just a little update on, um, Frost Road?
Oh, yes, uh, one forty-seven Frost Road, uh, last meeting I told you about the dumpsters that have been there. I spoke with the, uh, building inspector and he's been in touch with the owner and advised him to move them within two weeks. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Great, is, just real quick, is that sufficient time, like, to give the guy, like?
That's what Paul Welcome told him to do, so.
Okay, yep, just one, that's fine, thank you.
Good?
Thank you, sir.
Um, old business, enclave drainage.
So we received, um, received a letter from Whitestone, um, they're, they were, um, contacted, I guess Drew Bowler, right? Uh, they've, they've been working on the, um, the drainage revisions and, um, they've been working closely with David, I think he's gonna give you a, just a brief.
I can, I can give a general, general overview, so I believe where we left, and correct me if I'm wrong, where we left at last was they were in front of you saying they were gonna put in the seepage collars, um, try that and see how that works. Um, I don't know what month that was in, that was at least a couple of months ago, I think. So they, from my understanding, um, they had reached out to a couple of different contractors and the contractors had given them difference in opinions, um, and price, et cetera, to try to figure out, all right, what would, what would be the best way of going about it. They came back to me and they said that, um, you know, they, they didn't necessarily think this is the best solution. So they, you know, they're looking to giving another solution, I'm like, okay, it's, it's your design, you know, I'm, I'm here to review it on behalf of the town. Um, so that's when they came back with the underdrain, um, exhibit, which I believe, um, I, I think Pam has sent out to you, but either way, that included one, um, one seepage collar kind of at the bottom of the, of where that, you know, the utility trenches were going to be, instead of having multiple going up the slope, um, like we had talked about. They were providing a relief, um, you know, or proposed a relief, um, you know, underdrain to kinda collect any sort of water. I had a few issues with this, um, when they. I had a few issues with this, um, when they proposed it to me, um, based on, you know, the connection to the catch basin, based on the lack of redundancy, based on, um, kind of legitimizing a utility trench for a drainage pathway. So, they, um, uh, that, oh, sorry, let me back up. So the letter from Whitestone that, uh, Pam had referenced was in tandem with this underdrain exhibit. I believe Whitestone is a geotechnical engineer sta- stating that the underdrain would relieve pressure, which wasn't ever really my concern. Uh, my concerns were the, kinda the top three that I had, I had just outlined. So, most recently, um, Bowler had come back and proposed what I believe they originally, we had talked about, where that is the utility trench cutoff, uh, location exhibit, where along both the, uh, the water trench and the, um, the other utility trenches there, uh, the electrical and communications, they're proposing at regular intervals, um, seepage collars that are essentially, they're gonna be, um, jet routed in there or, um, injected, injection routed, I should say. Um, that essentially will fill the voids, create, uh, collars at regular intervals. You get the redundancy of, you know, say if that is picking up groundwater, you know, or some sort of water along the, along the way, it will stop it from flowing along the path of least resistance, which is the util- utility trenches, which is essentially a pipe encased in, um, like crushed gravel. Um, so they, they have now proposed, um, this utility trench cutoff. I said that looks like, you know, what we've talked about, you know, I'm alright with that and that's kinda where we've left it. I believe this was dated, uh, yeah, seven twenty-six, so last week, I believe, is when the utility trench cutoff location exhibit was, uh, presented to me. So, um, that's kinda where we're at, that's kind of a general overview from where you, where we last talked about it to today, so. Happy to answer any additional questions.
Jeremy?
Yeah, Dave, I, I just had a question about, so it, um, shows, shows it on the ET and C line and the water line. Um, is it not able to be on the gas line and what is the S line? I don't know which one that is. Just curious if that is a potential issue at all.
I think originally our, um, only concern was with the water line because, um, it doesn't show it on, uh, let me see, it doesn't show it on the utility trench cutoff location exhibit, but if you look at the underdrain exhibit, um, the water line has a hydraulic connection to the catch basins that are in the road, those Legion catch basins. And so I think the main concern was it was funneling water from the site to those catch basins, to the culvert that goes across the road. And I think that was the, that was the concern, was to keep the groundwater from the site on the site as opposed to having it, um, discharge across the road. So, um, the water line specifically was what our concern was, they also added it to the, uh, electrical telecommunications line. Um, long-winded answer is, I don't know, uh, potentially the gas isn't encased in, um, a crushed stone. Um, 'cause we have what, the gas and then the, is there another one as well?
What's the S line?
Uh, it would be sewer, but I don't believe that is going to the road, is it?
I guess my concern there is like it, it is crossing over the water line at the same exact location of the last proposed injection grouted cutoff. So, could that be another path of least resistance and then it's kind of going around in the, the system and?
I mean, that's a, that's a great question, um.
Because that, uh, and, and why, why doesn't it just continue for, 'cause you have them at intervals, starting at the upper roadway at ninety-seven?
Yes.
And then it stops right as soon as it rounds the curve and then you have a good distance of that whole entry that you don't have any, I was just, but because that occurs right at that location where there is a junction point of all the other ones, I'm, I'm concerned that we still have another path of least resistance, that's all.
No, absolutely, that's a, that's a fair question. Um, I believe in talks with Bowler, um, this, where they put these, uh, five cutoffs were in the steepest location of the, or the steepest area of the road, right? So, um, when it starts, let me see, when, when the road kinda, you have that first intersection where it starts, uh, north, I believe that's where it really starts to, um, be, become more steep, uh, you know. Further up the road, it softens a little bit and then in the entrance, it also softens slightly. Um, this is what they proposed, uh, you know, it's kind of in line with what we had, we had talked about. Um, if it doesn't work, then they can go back to the planning, or, you know, the, the planning board, they can go back to the proverbial board, um, as well. The, in regards to where the sewer line crosses, I mean, I agree, it looks like they have, um, have it just up gradient of where the sewer line crosses, so maybe they were anticipating exactly what you were saying. Um, so they're going to kind of inject grout into that area. Whether it goes into, the grout grows into the, um, the trench for the sewer line too, that's unclear. Um, I also had mentioned that they don't have like a detail in the approximate, um, you know, width and, you know, theoretical what it's going to look like in the ground when they, when they do inject it. Um, you know, to what volume, you know, what, what are the specs that they're going to kind of, um, go about, right? You know, meaning if you are injecting grout into this, um, uh, kind of a stone, stone trench, right? To what, you know, are you injecting it to a certain pressure, are you injecting it to a certain volume? Like, how, how are you guaranteeing that you are, um, injecting the, you know, correct amount of grout so it actually does what it's supposed to? Um, so that was, that was one question that I had, um, you know, this is an exhibit, it's, you know, preliminary, so we'll see what they come back with.
Last question I had was, how, how is this done? Uh, how, how, how do they put that grout in there? I'm just curious.
Um, I think it's literally they, they might core the pavement and they might just, um, really inject it, like think of a big turkey baster, I don't know how else to, uh, describe it.
No, no, that's, that's good, no, thank you, Dave.
Good, good, Jeremy?
Yep.
Kim?
I have a question.
Dave? Are you gonna be on site when they're doing this?
I would like to be.
I would like you to be also. This has been long enough, they played around with some numbers, met some other people and ended up exactly the same plan that they had originally said they were gonna do and the only thing I see different is they had originally said they were gonna start at the bottom and just keep working their way up. But I guess some things have changed, they can try it, see if it works. That's it.
Josh?
I'm just kinda baffled, we approved this identical plan pretty much May, was it?
Yeah.
And yet, nothing is done, again.
And they wanna, seems like.
Can we maybe try and get them in here to try and explain to us?
They're doing less, in my eyes.
At the next meeting, why they didn't do what we have asked them to do and, I mean, poor Dave here, he's, he, they, there's nobody to answer any questions that we have, time and time again.
Well. Well, I didn't ask them to come because we, this was, just kinda came across the desk and I just wanted to give you an update.
Sure.
So I didn't have a chance to reach out to them, to tell them that, you know, you, the board's probably gonna wanna talk to you, so that would be my fault that they're not here.
It's not your fault, Kim, it's their fault, and I think that anytime that, anything that has to do with enclave shows up on our agenda, even as it's a discussion item, I would like to have them in the room with us so that we can ask them questions.
I second that.
Yeah, well, it just seems like when we discussed it months ago, they were gonna do it all the way up and now they cut down to Bible of or something, so.
Matter of fact, promised by their attorney, I'm not gonna forget that.
Alright. So, do I have another motion?
Oh, you do adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's closed.
Dave, thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
It has always.